To the Tuesday, August the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Denton County Commissioners Corps. We're glad to have you all at this time. I'd like to welcome forward for our invocation Randy Sheffield with Denton Bible Church. And our pledges will be led by Paul Bastic, our Denton County Veteran Service Officer. I'd like to remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones. If you'll please stand.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here with you all again. And certainly we're Denton Bible Church, we're proud to be a part of these communities that we all serve. And please join me as I pray. Well, Father, certainly it's appropriate as we gather today to come before you to ask for your blessings on these procedures. Father, I thank you for this group of people that serve this community so well, for our law enforcement, for our first responders, Father, for all that help us to make these communities just a wonderful and a great place to be. Dear God, we know that we live in days of great concern, and yet these are days of great opportunity. So help us, Father, to seize those opportunities. I pray for wisdom and discernment for this group. And I pray for your blessings on our county and our communities that are in this county. It's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Randy, and thank you, Paul. Cheryl, do we have anyone in it that is registered for item one? We have no items, no one registered for our public input, for items not listed on the agenda. I'd like to go to item three A. Three A is approval of a court proclamation recognizing August the thirty-first as North Texas Overdose Awareness Day. And I'd like to, we have Sharon Roland with us today. Sharon, are you with us? Oh, Sharon, would you like to come up and make any introductory comments before we read your proclamation? Or any guests you have with you? Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you. This is my daughter-in-law, Rachel, who is a very important member of our team for this event. And we just want to thank you commissioners for being supportive of North Texas Overdose Awareness Day and of the issue of substance use disorder and addiction and overdose. We know it's an issue that impacts everyone in our community. So thank you very much. And we want to invite everyone here to come out on August thirty-first. It's on the lawn, east lawn of the Denton Courthouse on the square at six thirty for an event that will recognize this issue. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Okay, I'll go ahead and read this proclamation. This is a court proclamation recognizing North Texas Overdose Awareness Day. And whereas International Overdose Awareness Day is a global campaign on the thirty-first day of August each year, where which sanctions events held locally to promote awareness of the opioid crisis. Whereas preliminary data released by the CDC shows there were more than one hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and eighty overdose deaths in the United States in two thousand and twenty-two, setting a new one-year record as the fentanyl crisis continues to deepen and averaging over three hundred American lives lost each day to overdose, with Texas and Washington State seeing the biggest increases in drug fatalities in real numbers. Whereas North Texas Overdose Awareness Day aims to raise awareness of drug overdose within the community, to provide resources, support, and harm reduction for those who struggle with substance use disorder and the disease of addiction, to reduce the stigma of drug-related deaths, and to acknowledge the grief felt by families and friends remembering those who have died or had a permanent injury as a result of drug overdose. Whereas North Texas Overdose Awareness Day spreads the message that substance use disorder, addiction, and overdose deaths impact all of us regardless of race, gender, education, or socioeconomic status. According to the CDC, some experts believe the opioid crisis will soon emerge as the greatest public health crisis facing the United States. Whereas it is imperative that we set aside a day for remembrance and education to unite in the fight against the tragedy of drug overdose, which is entirely preventable. Now therefore be resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Corps would like to hereby proclaim August the thirty-first as North Texas Overdose Awareness Day in Denton County and urge all citizens to remember those who struggle daily with substance use disorder and all of those with whom we have lost due to drug addiction and overdose. Done in open court this the fifteenth day of August, two thousand and twenty-three, upon a motion made by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion, members? All right. Thank you all for being here and thank you for what you're doing. And I hope, hope this proclamation and the social media affiliated with it will bring awareness to this. And so we always believe that talking about tough issues like this is the very first step in tackling them. So thank you for what you do. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. Let's go to item two, which is our consent agenda, members. Are there any items you'd like to pull off the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the item as presented? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item two A is approval of order-making appointments. Item two B is approval of the interdepartmental transfers. Item two C is approval of payroll. Item two D is approval of budget memory request one zero one eight eight zero for the facilities management department to transfer three thousand and three hundred dollars from Loop Two Eighty-eight Administrative Courthouse Water Service to Precinct Three Government Center Water Service to cover the cost of water service for the remainder of the fiscal year. Item two E is approval of budget memory request one zero one eight nine zero for the facilities management department to transfer two thousand five hundred dollars from Loop Two Eighty-eight Administrative Courthouse Gas Service to Courthouse on the Square Gas Service to cover the cost of gas service for the remainder of the fiscal year. Item two F is approval of budget memory request one zero one nine zero zero for the indigent care department to transfer one thousand six hundred and sixty dollars from indigent medical care with one thousand and sixty dollars to administrative equipment and six hundred dollars to administrative supplies to cover the cost of equipment and supplies for the health navigation staff in any appropriate action. And item two G is the road superintendent report for the month of July, two thousand and twenty-three. This is presented for recording purposes only. And we've already done three A. Let's go to our auditor under five A, which is approval of the bill report payments from CSUD, Community Corrections, TAIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, VIT Interest and DA Forfeiture Funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May?
Thank you, Judge. I have no changes today. Recommend approval as presented.
Do we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to item five B. This is a discussion and consideration of an order authorizing the issuance of Denton County Texas Tax Notes. This is series two zero two three specifying the terms and features of said notes levying a continuing direct annual ad valorem tax for payment of said notes, delegating matters related to the sale of the issuance of said notes to an authorized county official and resolving other matters incident related thereto. All right, we'll call upon Mr. May. Go ahead.
Thank you, Judge. And I would like to invite John Martin, and we also have Bob Dransfield here. Bob, John's with Hilltop Securities, and he's our financial advisor. And Bob Dransfield's our legal counsel with Norton Bros. and Fullback. And I had recommended tax notes as required by the law to meet some of our county needs. These are one-year tax notes that we're looking at are actually maybe thirteen months and to be paid next year. They will not create, actually our debt service tax rate will decrease even with this tax note issue. So I'll let John take it from here.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Martin.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Thanks for having us this morning. As Jeff mentioned, Bob Dransfield's here for any legal questions. Jeff did a great job explaining your, this is just an opportunity for us to get some projects other than roads done here for the county. And because we know that you all have quite a basket of capital improvement needs and not just roads. And so this will give us an opportunity to do that. Tax notes, we did the same type situation, same type issuance last year. It's an opportunity with no tax impact whatsoever. We will go through the rating process. That will be a publicly offered bond that will be, like as Jeff said, roughly a thirteen-month maturity.
Perfect. Good. Thank you. Members, are there any questions or do we have a motion for approval?
We have approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Falconer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Thank you, Mr. Dransfield. Next is item six A, approval of purchase of Everbridge Subscription Services from Petrosys Solutions Incorporated in amount of fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-seven cents through the Texas Department of Information Resources Cooperative Contract DIRTSO four three nine five in any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six B, approval to declare miscellaneous equipment, office supplies, furniture, appliance and tools as surplus advertised in place in an online auction. This is number two three dash two seven seven three.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six C, approval of purchase of microwave ring improvements to two radio towers to be installed for the Denton County P twenty-five Regional Radio Network from Johnston Technical Services Incorporated, DBA JTS, in the total amount of five hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixteen cents through the Texas Department of Information Resources DIR Cooperative Contract DIRCPO four seven nine two.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six D, approval of Evaluation Committee's recommendation to pre-qualified Jensen Hughes as a most qualified firm for RFSQ number two three dash two seven four two, Facilities Emergency Plan in any appropriate action.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're going to skip some of those budget items till later this afternoon, y'all. Let's go to item seven E is approval of a budget memory request one zero one nine one zero for the sheriff's administration to transfer nineteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars from county vehicles unappropriated contingency to county vehicles to cover a price increase for two vehicles that were approved by the Vehicle Assessment Committee as part of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven F, approval of budget memory request one zero one nine two zero for the county criminal court number four and five to transfer three thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars from Psychological Services to County Criminal Court Number Two to cover the cost of psychological services previously heard in these courts. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven G, approval of budget memory request one zero one nine three zero to transfer fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars from non-departmental unappropriated contingency to Briarwood Property, various line items to fund utilities and services for the newly acquired Briarwood Property. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item eight A is a report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez?
Judge Commissioners, good morning. We have one promotion in JP six for new hires in the sheriff's office and one promotion in the tax office. That's it for this week.
Perfect.
We have four new hires as detention officers.
Yes, very good news.
That's right.
All right. Thank you. That is for recording purposes only. Next, let's go to eight B. This is approval of active full-time employee medical premiums, active full-time and retiree dental premiums. This is option one, there's options one, two, and three, and active full-time and retiree vision premiums for plan year two thousand and twenty-four.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Well, we need to make a selection of which one of the options.
So.
Motion all three?
Judge Commissioners, so for the medical plan, I just want to give you the great news. The plan is performing very well. Employees are taking care of themselves. We have enough funds to keep the same rates that we have been maintaining for the last few years for employees. So that is great news for the employees. I recommend that we do no increase rates on the medical plan. And I'm asking you to choose between option one, two, or three for the dental PPO plan as the claims are increasing in there. The increase is forty thousand dollars. I'm recommending that the county absorbs that increase. That will make the county contributing, contribution seventeen percent, moving from thirteen percent to seventeen percent of the overall cost of the dental plan. I'm recommending to.
And approximately, will you remind us what that total cost is?
It's around, oh, sometimes, um, the total cost for the increase would be forty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Gustavo.
Thanks.
Next is item eight C. Eight C is approval of part-time employee medical premiums, grandfather employees working less than thirty hours a week in Cobra premiums for plan year two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-four. Gustavo?
Judge, we have one part-time employee that currently carries insurance with the county. So I'm recommending that we keep the same cost threshold that we have been doing for the past few years and just to approve the COVID rates as presented.
Okay, members, are there any questions?
Moved to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is eight D. This is approval of retiring medical insurance premiums for plan year two thousand and twenty-four in any appropriate action.
Moved to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Fa, uh, Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item eight E, approval of vendor rates for plan year two thousand and twenty-four.
Judge Commissioners, on this item, there is one small increase on United Healthcare Administrative Fees. That's part of the contract that we have with them for five years. The increase is around eighty cents per employee per month. So it's a minimum increase and it's part of the agreement that we already have with them. All other rates remain the same. Later on, when we have the stop-loss information, I will be bringing that for you to approve. But today is the regular administrative fees.
Perfect. We have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Nick, thank you.
Thank you.
Gustavo for all that. And everyone in the HR office, thank y'all for all those great work on that. Next is item twelve A, approval of the modification of the United States Army Corps of Engineers Agreement with Denton County for the two thousand and twenty-three patrol services at Lake Lewisville.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is twelve B, approval of the inter-local cooperation agreement for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four between Denton County, Texas and Cook County, Texas for the emergency housing and care of inmates. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item thirteen A, approval of the United Way of Denton County Incorporated funded request to fulfill the allocation of American Rescue Plan for housing assistance, nonprofit assistance, and food assistance due to COVID-nineteen and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Don, for your continued work on this. Next is item thirteen B. This is approval of a daily amount of reimbursement for expenses for a person who reports for jury service and discharges the person's duty. The amount of reimbursement for each day must be within the minimum, the minimum and maximum amounts prescribed by this section and paid out by the jury fund for the county. And this is covered under Texas Government Code six one dash zero zero one. Any appropriate action? And we do have our district clerk here. David, did you want to come say anything?
Morning, Judge Commissioners. The legislature this year did increase the jury pay rate for the first time in many, 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 many decades, probably longer than we've been alive. I guess it's probably been six dollars and forty dollars. But now they've increased it to the minimums are twenty dollars for the first day and fifty-eight dollars for each day of service after the first day. The fifty-eight dollars is kind of a brand loop. So we've asked the county to set the minimum at sixty dollars for each day after the first day. We, two thousand and twenty, commissioners and judge approved a new jury service software. We're able to cancel out numerous amounts of jurors that we don't need, and we're working on sending them directly to JP Courts. We're saving a lot of money, so I don't imagine the extra two-dollar increase will have a impact on the jury fund since we are able to count, you know, today I needed seventy-nine jurors, so I canceled out two hundred of them Friday or yesterday or afternoon, pardon me. So we're saving money. I don't think the two-dollar impact will make a difference going from fifty-eight dollars to sixty dollars. So just in the mental sense of saying sixty bucks, it makes a lot more sense. The mental math is easier. Talked to the treasurer's office about it. She's also, you know, is in favor of the sixty-dollar set too. So I would recommend the twenty dollars for the first day and sixty dollars for each day of service after that.
Okay, perfect. All right. Members, are there any questions?
I move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion?
Judge, it'll take effect September first.
Oh, yes, September first, effective this year.
And just clarifying, it's for the sixty, right?
Yeah, fifty-eight to sixty.
All right. Is there any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, thirteen C is approval of the Order of Special Election to be held November the seventh, two thousand and twenty-three in Denton County, Texas for the purpose of voting in a special election to adopt or reject the proposed constitutional amendments as submitted by the eighty-eighth legislature, regular session, and a special, and a second special session of the state of Texas. And this is by the elections administration. And do we have a motion for approval? Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Frank, for being here. Next is thirteen D. This is approval of a resolution creating a hotel occupancy tax in Denton County, Texas effective October the first, two thousand and twenty-three. And I've got a resolution here that I will read. Just a second. Cheryl, do we have, I don't think I have that in the folder. Thank you. This is a resolution creating a hotel occupancy tax in Denton County, Texas. And whereas the Texas Legislature amended Texas Tax Code Section three five two point zero zero two V by adding provisions which authorized Denton County, Texas to levy and collect a hotel occupancy tax at a rate not to exceed two percent of the price paid for a room in a hotel in the county. And whereas the provision of said law allows for the adoption of said tax on a person who under, under lease concession, permit, right of access, license, contract, or agreement pays for the use of possession or for the right to the use or possession of a room that is in a hotel, costs two dollars or more each day and is ordinarily used for sleeping. And whereas the hotel occupancy tax shall apply to all hotels as defined in Section one fifty-six of the Texas Tax Code located within Denton County, except the tax rate does not apply to a hotel project that is located on contiguous property in more than one county. Whereas all eligible hotels shall account and collect said hotel tax at a time and on a form prescribed by Denton County and shall remit said tax in reports to the Denton County Office of the Treasurer. And whereas the Denton County Commissioners Court recognizes the importance of promoting economic development and tourism, deems it is in the best interest of the county to impose the hotel occupancy tax authorized under Chapter three fifty-two of the Texas Tax Code. Whereas the revenue derived from a hotel occupancy tax may be used for the purposes authorized by Section three fifty-one point one zero one and Section three fifty-two point one one two of the Texas Tax Code. Whereas the Denton County Commissioners Court shall establish an advisory project functionality and marketing committee. Membership of the committee shall be appointed by the Commissioners Court and consists of not fewer than nine or more than fourteen individuals. That include at least seven hotel owners, hotel operator, or destination marketing organization representatives from any municipality subject to the hotel, to the county hotel occupancy tax. And whereas this committee shall review and make quarterly recommendations to the county on how to maximize the functionality and marketing of projects that are funded with local hotel occupancy tax revenue. And now therefore be resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court does hereby adopt and impose a hotel occupancy tax effective October the first, two thousand and twenty-three, and be it further resolved that the tax shall be two percent of the price paid for a room in a hotel subject to the tax in an open court this fifteenth day of August, two thousand and twenty-three, upon a motion by the chair. Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I do want to thank our county treasurer who's with us this morning. Thank you, Ms. Brown, for your willingness to administer the collection of this. The Commissioners Court really appreciates it. And I want to thank Mr. May. Thank you for all your efforts and consultation regarding the collection thereof. So thank you. All right, next, let's go to item fourteen A, approval of an amendment to the Denton County Commissioners Court Order number two three dash zero six three zero dated August the eighth, two thousand and twenty- dated August 8, 2023 to correct the topographical error and substitute the words "freedom" title where it said "title partners" with all other portions of the Denton County Commissioners Court Order Number 23-0630 to remain in full of force and effect as approved by the Commissioners Court on August 8, 2023. Chair will move for approval. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 14B, approval of the 2023-2024 affiliation agreement between Denton County, Texas on behalf of the Denton County District Attorney's Office and Denton Independent School District on behalf of the Grown Academy Law, Public Safety Corrections, and Security Program in any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. We are... Let me look at this. Look at the time. We're at 9:30. We're going to start our budget hearings at 10:00. So, why don't we go ahead and do our community updates? We'll start with Commissioner Williams.
Thank you Judge. I think it's just a quick reminder that obviously most of our schools are either in session or about to be in session this week. So, please keep in mind when you're going to or from work or wherever it may be, especially during the times that our kids may or may not be going to or from school, that we really pay attention and then watch out for the buses as well. It's time to get back to school, as they all say. So, that's all I've got, Judge.
Perfect. Good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Falconer.
Thank you Judge. There's just, we've got a short list today of some events happening in the next week. So, in Carrollton, Game On for Adults is August 16 from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Josie Ranch Library. And then there's a Board and Commissions Meet and Greet at City Hall in Carrollton on August 23 at 5:30. And then finally, Frisco Friday Night Summer Movie Series on the 18th at 8 o'clock on the PGA Parkway.
Perfect. Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell.
I have Flower Mountain Farmers Market on Sunday. Lakeside Music on August 18th. Chamber Music at the Library in Flower Mountain on the 19th. National Senior Citizen Day Party on the 21st. I think I'll try to attend that. They have ice cream. And I like ice cream. Denim and Pearls 30th Anniversary Gala. That's going to be for special abilities. It's going to be at the Marriott in Flower Mountain on August 26. Lake Dallas Trade Days in Farmers Market is going on August 29 and 26. Louisville Leila Night is tomorrow night, 9:00 to 11:30. I'm going to skip that one. It's outside. And then we also have Leila Night in Louisville on the 31st.
Perfect. Good. Thank you. Commissioner Edmondson.
Well, I think most everybody in Precinct 4 is staying inside, which I believe is very wise. We do have a few things. The Roanoke Farmers Market is still going on from 8:00 a.m. to noon. And then in Southlake, we have Movies in the Park on the 19th. And there is the Hot Hatch Chili Run Walker Roll. For those of you who may not be native to Texas, Hatch Chilis actually come from New Mexico and they're a very special, just right hot chili. So, they have some at the local grocery stores. And they're also having a run in favor of these chilis in Southlake. So, I'd like to just remind everybody, it is hot out there. It's cooler today and a little bit tomorrow. I mean, when it's in the high 90s, that's cooler. But that's where we are, folks. So, please take advantage of our lovely air conditioning every place that you can. Don't be out in the heat. There's too many people suffering from heat stroke, et cetera. So, stay inside. Stay safe. We love you all.
All right. Perfect. Good. Well, I would like to let everybody know it's that time of year again. And we're very excited that the North Texas Fair starts this Friday night. There's another annual parade on Saturday morning. And then it concludes next Saturday night, not this Saturday night, but the next Saturday night. So, I want to thank everybody for putting that on their calendar, potentially going out. It's just, it's a great opportunity to demonstrate the vibrant agriculture industry here in Denton County and our businesses and youth events. And there's something for all ages at the North Texas Fair. So, I want to encourage everybody to join us for that. So, let's go ahead and we have our budget sessions, public hearings set for 10 o'clock. So, we're going to go ahead and go into executive session for a couple of items that will allow the Budget Office to mobilize and set up their system for a presentation at 10. So, let's go to item... We'll go to executive session for 15A or Texas Government Code 551087. Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations is in a closed meeting to deliberate the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect regarding commercial or financial information that the governmental body has received from a business prospect that the governmental body seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the territory of a governmental body located in Denton County, Commissioner Precinct 4, and with which the governmental body is conducting economic development negotiations. And 15B, Texas Government Code 5510745A1. Personal matters affecting a county advisory body close meeting to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a member of an advisory body and to wit the MHMR Board of Directors in any appropriate action. It is 9:35. We're in executive session.